Good evening. We're in a lot of silence here. The council made your order. At this time, I'm going to ask everyone if they would ride ahead for a moment of silence for a de-count agenda. And all God's children, sir.
Amen.
Amen.
Tonight is indeed a pleasure to have Mr. Sam Rock come to please come give his dedication.
Is it on?
Yes, ma'am. My presence. Dear heaven and Father, we hear the course of heaven and bend your name. We praise your name. We thank you for your creation. We thank you for the city of Selma. We thank you that the city of Selma will fulfill the plans and purposes for which you created it. I thank you and ask you to bless each member of this council with discernment, wisdom, and good judgment. And we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
What's that? I'm blessed with allegiance. I'm blessed with allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to your public, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, not a card.
President Bowie.
President.
Councilman Bowlin.
Present.
Councilwoman Youngblood. Councilwoman Jackson.
Here.
Councilwoman Benjamin. Councilwoman Randolph.
Here.
Councilwoman Shaw. Councilwoman Thomas.
Ready.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Here.
Okay, I stated before, we do have a four. The characteristic of the month is compassion and besting whatever is necessary to heal the hurt of others. Council members, you have before you the regular agenda. I need to mention this agenda to add one to the citizens' request. When I emailed out the agenda, I had a request in my mail office, so I'm just going to add reverence from the citizens' request. So that would be our citizens that goes upon the citizens' request. At this time, the chairman of the town will motion to approve the amended agenda. We're most going to throw back Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Randolph. Can I follow the discussion? Roll call.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood. Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin. Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Shaw. Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, we're approving. Council members, you have before you the present agenda, which will have three items on the agenda. At any point in time that you would like to remove an item, you can, you can go on, have our discussion separately. Present item number one, to approve order zero one oh three dash eighteen nineteen, assess the penalties for discharge or fouling in the city limits of which you were stated. Present item number two, to approve the walk to Calvary for April eighteenth, nineteenth, and twenty-first. This event has been occurring for the last twenty-five years. And the sent item number three, to approve order zero one oh four dash eighteen nineteen, approving the city of Selma to give the Edgewood Elementary property in an amount of twelve hundred dollars for a community project. At this time, council members, what's the pleasure of the council? As you know, whenever we have an ordinance that's not on first read, we have to vote to suspend the rules and ask the candidates to vote to suspend the rules to vote on tonight. So what's the pleasure of the council?
Well, I'd like to vote, make a motion to suspend the rule.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend the rules for order zero one oh four dash eighteen nineteen, approving the city of Selma to give the Edgewood Elementary property. We have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules by Councilman Randolph, second by Councilman Bowlin. Can I follow the discussion?
Yes. Did we discuss this last night at the forum session?
What's that?
Uh huh.
We had, we had a turn of the case.
No, I'm just asking that we discussed it last night. So this is a new item? Okay.
Yeah, we already talked about it.
Okay, and number one in the email, and I'm assuming it's the same words in your email.
Yes.
I had a citizen to ask me concerning that firearm shooting. A citizen who is defending themselves, shooting a firearm, is, is not included in this visit.
In the exceptions, according to the Alamo, yes, they would not be subject to this.
And that spelled out, and very specifically spelled out, and what we're about to do in this ordinance.
It's instead of Trump.
Okay.
All right, this is for to suspend the rules. We have a motion on the floor, Councilman Randolph, second by Councilman Bowlin. Can I follow the discussion? Roll call, discuss the suspension.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood. Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Shaw. Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, the motion will approve the suspended rules. At this time, the chairman of the town will motion to place all three items on the present agenda and approve all three items. Do I have a motion on the floor? We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Bowlin, second by Councilman Johnson. Roll call.
President Bowie.
Yes, from one and two, abstaining from number three.
Councilman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood. Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Okay. Hold on, I'm trying to think. I'm going to make sure I'm looking at the same thing I looked at in the email. Yes.
Councilman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Shaw. Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman.
Yes.
All right, with the senate in the pass. Council members, you have before you the February twenty-sixth minutes. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to prove, prove the minute. I think it was emailed out, Ms. Harrison. Do you have a copy of it? Okay.
Which one?
February twenty-sixth.
Yeah, February twenty-sixth. Yes, that's the one.
Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to prove the minute. Are there any corrections? deletions? All right, at this time, the chairman of the town will motion that we approve February twenty-sixth minutes.
So.
We have a motion on the floor, Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Bowlin. Roll call.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood. Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Okay. Hold on, I'm trying to think. I'm going to make sure I'm looking at the same thing I looked at in the email. Yes.
Councilman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Shaw. Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman.
Yes.
All right, with the senate in the pass. Council members, you have before you the February twenty-sixth minutes. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to prove the minute. Are there any corrections? deletions? All right, at this time, the chairman of the town will motion that we approve February twenty-sixth minutes.
So.
We have a motion on the floor, Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Bowlin. Roll call.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood. Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passed to approve February twenty-sixth minutes. At this time, we are down to announcements from council members and announcements that you have at this time. Councilwoman Jackson, Councilman Bowlin, Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes, sir. First, I would like to thank Mr. Dale Purdy, Liberty Disposal, Mr. Darryl Stewart, and Ray Harrison, and all the citizens that came out on this Saturday and helped with our cleanup, wise up cleanup award three. We had about forty-five volunteers, and Liberty did provide a truck, garbage truck, as well as bins and barrels that we could put things in. So we're so appreciative of everyone coming out and assisting us with those, and our business owners continuing to partner with us in that area. Also, I want to make sure everyone was aware of the Night of Hope that's scheduled for April third, twenty nineteen, at this year, at our own block park. This is our third annual Night of Hope, and we ask that all of you please participate.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Bowlin, and Councilman Benjamin, and Councilman.
Just really want to, obviously, the weather's supposed to be raining on Thursday, and that's the scheduled date for the Alamo River Chili Cook-Off. So I know they're meeting today to determine the viability of the cook-off being on Thursday, so I just wanted to make a heads-up, maybe canceled, depending on weather. So please pay attention. I think STJ will probably help with that, and the radio station's probably helping with that. Of course, social media pages will be out there as well. So people, please, please pay attention to that as we get closer to Thursday.
Will it be canceled post-buick?
It'll be postponed.
Post-buick another day.
Yeah, it won't be on Thursday, it'll be, I think, another Friday or something.
Thank you, council.
They've been texting back and forth all day, but I'm going to keep up with all of it.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Benjamin.
Just want to remind everyone of the citizen, group effort of our citizens who are putting together citywide cleanup in our wards on this coming Saturday. And for those, and I'm going to announce this for those who are listening for Ward Four, we started our cleanup last time in Ward Four West. This time, we're starting Ward Four East. So you can meet us and park at the spaces, at the vacant lot on the corner of Marie Foster and First Avenue. So for a point of reference, this is the Old Phillips Green Gas Station and right next to First Avenue Cleaners. Those, there are parking spots right at that vacant lot. You all can meet us there. We're starting Ward Four East, and as time permits, we'll make our way to Ward Four West.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Randolph.
Councilwoman, they had called about finding a location for each ward to put their tracks. Have y'all came up with a location?
Yes, so the lot on the, the lot on the east, the vacant lot on the east, and the lot at Edgewood near the ballpark, those parking spaces right there near the ballpark, if you would bag them and tie it. It needs to be bagged and tied to be picked up. You know, don't dump. Those to Ward Four West by the baseball park at Edgewood Elementary School, which is actually on your side, so we, I guess we'll be sharing. And the vacant lot on the corner of Marie Foster and First Avenue. Bagged and tied.
All right. And then, Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes, I would like to make this announcement for Councilwoman Youngblood. She said that she would be having a Ward One cleanup, two, Ward Two cleanup, where she would have a meeting at tomorrow at five o'clock at the YMCA to organize her cleanup with Mrs., the young lady that's having the cleanup.
All right. Do you want to add a message, Councilman Randolph?
I just want to make a message about, yesterday, I found a bear, my auntie, she was a hundred and seven years old. She was from Prentiss, Alabama, and she was a hundred and seven years old, stealing her white, white land, and she was driving.
Wow.
And she passed Tuesday in her sleep, and so I just wanted to share that with you. My sister and I, we did get to go to Mobile last Monday. We had church up in the house, you know. She said, wow, I didn't know all of y'all could sing like that. How come y'all just come and sing for me? But we put on a concert up in that, in our house, and we had a good time, and I just wanted to share that with the public.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilman Randolph, for us to review our defense on this time.
Yeah, first of all, I'm hoping and praying that Councilman Shaw, he'll do a lot better here, because due to illness, so he'll be a speedy recovery for him. And also, we also, Ward Eight, the cleanup will get started around noon. The meeting part will be at the Sports Bar, go to meet up there. If there are any citizens in Ward Eight that know a safe area that y'all want us to target, we will. We're going to try to hit the whole Ward Eight, so we're asking all those volunteers to be at noon at the Sports Bar on Seventh Avenue for this clean Ward Eight up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Councilwoman Thomas.
I didn't get a chance to finish. Ward Seven will be having a ward meeting tomorrow at five o'clock at Ward Chapel, AM Church. And also, we will be having a, next week, we will be having a cleanup in our community from Boynton all the way down to Summerfield, which that School of Discovery, Mrs. Sisley has offered to use some of her, her young people to help move on.
That Ward Seven meeting tomorrow?
Yes, we will have Ward Seven meeting tomorrow because.
What time?
We'll have it at five o'clock.
Okay. Thank you. You have announcements? I have announcements. Thank you, council. Now to the citizens who report, Governor Leo Strong, you're reverend.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Thank you. I know it's been a long day for each of you, and I appreciate you doing, thank you for the mic. I don't think I need it, do I?
Yes, you do. Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you.
And it's not working.
It's not.
Testing one, two, three.
It's not working. Your bottom, let me see your bottom.
Well, that's, that's three-fourths of the time that I was going to be up here already. It's, it's working, isn't it? Yeah. Yeah, let me just say thank you. I know you all have had a long day, and your service to the city requires you to be away from families. Five o'clock, when I was your all's age, I wanted to be at home around the dinner table with, with family, spend that time with them. So I thank you for the sacrifices that you were making on behalf of all of us. I spent a lot of time on my job in an office that almost abuts the horseshoe at GWC. The place where I work is right in the heart of GWC. There were two murders in the harsh horseshoe during the month of January, and on February twenty-fourth, we honored law enforcement officers, gave awards and adaliers, a meal, fellowship food. Councilwoman Maya Jackson was there for the entire service and the luncheon, and helped make the presentations to police officers, and we're grateful. On Bloody Sunday, Councilman Johnson was there for the service and express, for the commemorative service and express remarks on behalf of the city. As I said, our church is in the heart of GWC, and on February the fourth, we are aware of security all the time, not the other areas, and not. From that service, Captain King, on behalf of Chief Collier, and Attorney Richard Moore, on behalf of himself, U.S. Attorney, expressed their gratitude and their appreciation. I spoke with some of the police officers, there were city police, county chairs, state troopers, and then, of course, the federal attorney general, who was present. I spoke with some of the police officers, and I made them a promise that I would do everything that I could, and I'd help make sure that they had what they needed to do the dangerous job that they do on behalf of all of us. I want to submit a rough draft. I don't even call it a proposal. I want to submit it as something to take home, to look at, hopefully, provide some framework for discussion, maybe referred to committee, to help move beyond some of the stalemate, some of the gridlock and the deadlock, so that issues of public safety, fire, police, others can be more adequately addressed. There are some which need immediate attention and some who are long-range. I'm going to give each of you a copy of it, and hopefully, it will have some ideas. I'm aware of the, what I saw as being, what was labeled as a citizen's proposal for revenue. My concern is that it stops short, does not go far enough to address the kind of major security issues that endangers lives all around us, and that still leaves police and fire and others inadequately and insufficiently equipped. I also, it doesn't go far enough. It's an excellent start. I commend those who put it together. And the other part is that it's, it's not reflective of a sample, a cross-sectional representative of a sample of the citizenry. And so, in addition to that piece of proposal, maybe entering into the thought process, the deliberations, there needs to be some sampling of the thinking of other citizens as well. And so, I, I would not want a decision to be finalized, or decisions to be finalized here, that were based solely on that singular frame of reference and that singular point of view. And so, I'm, what I'm submitting, I hope, also, I have submitted a copy of it to the person who submitted that and asked for his tweaking of it as, as well. I'm not concerned about whether it gets public distribution or not. My, my major concern is that the people who do the hard work, who carry the burden in the heat of the day, have a sampling of the thinking from other points of view. I don't think we can continue to go the way that we're going. We've got to break through the deadlock and the gridlock of where we are right now. And I think it's going to be important, and I include some of those considerations, I hope, in what I will be giving to each of you as a copy. I think we're teetering and tottering on the brink, on the verge, not just of dysfunction, but perhaps even bankruptcy. And, and while there are some delays possible for long-term planning, and I address that in what I'm giving to you, there's some things that, that, that we've got to do immediately that we cannot wait for another election cycle to take place. And I know it's tough, and what you do is a thankless job, and whatever you do, somebody's going to pick it apart and find fault with it. But who knows? Like Esther, maybe you've come in the positions that you hold for just such a crisis, such a critical moment as this. We trust you. We, we, we believe that, that you are ready for, to rise to the occasion. And I just want to submit to each of you some thoughts, so that rather than just thinking about one possibility, there will be some other options that will be taken into consideration also. And I thank you for your.
Thank you. May I, may I just. Yes, sir. Please, sir.
Thank you.
I have one. Is this a new one?
This is a less rough.
Oh, okay. A rough one, straight.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, all right. American Board.
Mr. President, Chief Collier, if you could, he wants to speak or something on behalf of the American Board. And whether we vote up or down, I think he asked last night to, he's put it on the floor about the automobiles.
Well, I think the citizens might have a finance committee Monday, as long as you have, doing the finance committee.
Well, you want, I mean, you want to talk to Chief Collier, do you?
My mother. You want to be here doing the finance committee, you and my mother.
Mr. President, I apologize, that was not my understanding.
Yes, sir.
But in saying that, you can see the number of officers that, that I have here. I would just like to reiterate, and you run a tight ship here, so I'll be very quick with my time. I would not come before this council and ask for additional money. I want to reiterate, we're not doing that. With that, with the exception of Mr. Bernard Randolph's generosity in purchasing a vehicle for the police department, we are in dire, dire straits. Again, and we'll deal with it in finance. I'm simply asking for the opportunity to transfer a portion of the maintenance money, and I count it today, just on our lot, I've got fourteen vehicles that are ready to be surplus. That's before I go to Water Street and count those there. We almost could cover this lease by surplusing these vehicles. With that, I'm going to need the authority to, to do that. In addition to, to make the, the lease happen in the finance committee, I will ask for that transfer, that additional money. And with your indulgence, I've got quite a bit of representation here of my officers as opposed to you here, potentially here in my dial tribes, I would like to give the opportunity for Detective Devin McGuire to say a few words. No?
Chief, thank you for coming back. And, and just so we don't rehash what we already talked about on last night. So what you talked about concerning the vehicles on last night, I, I asked around, I did a little, little research, and what I found in my research in just this one day, I'm going to get in trouble having meetings back to back, because it doesn't allow you enough time to go and research anything, really, in one day.
But in my understanding.
Jesus.
I think, I think that's what council made. I thought I was following the proper protocol.
Oh, no, 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 you did. No, this is not on you. This is, I changed from Thursday to Monday. But what I did find, what I did find was this is that you all have Crown Victorias and, and all those vehicles that have been there for over two hundred thousand miles and all those things. I'd like to make a motion to approve for the surplus, so that he can begin the surplus. Sell those cars, sell those cars. And I talked to some very reliable people concerning, not that I'm not saying you're not reliable, but what I'm saying, people I have a relationship with, have built with, you know, long before you came to sell them. So I'd like to make a motion, first of all, concerning that. And then, the money that you're asking to be moved, can you please, and it, and it could be a parrot or whatever, can you please put that in writing to us, so that when we meet on Monday, we have a piece of writing from the department head, issue, the department head saying that this is a dire need, we're not asking for new money, we're just asking for money to be moved from one line item to the other line item.
I, I absolutely do.
Ms. President, I make the motion that the surplus, to, to give the chief permission to surplus those cars, so that he can get the money into the department.
We have a motion on the floor, Councilwoman Benjamin, second, Councilman Bowlin. Can I follow the discussion?
After we have a meeting on Monday, can we have a special call meeting to move forward this, to transfer? Our citizens are in, in, in trouble every day when the officers not, not doing what they need to do, because they don't have a transportation either. So once we have a finance committee meeting on Monday, can we have a special call meeting Monday, Baron Vailso, to move forward on allowing treasure wealth to move money forward, to go ahead and forward, given what they need? Thank you.
Can I follow the discussion?
Mr. President, and I'll be done all, okay. We have a good relationship, a good working relationship. But I need to, I need to express, Detective Devin McGuire has put his life on the line for years here. I am disappointed he has not got an opportunity to speak. He, he has been.
Who is that?
Gentlemen sitting right here. He, he has been selected by his fellow officers to be a voice.
How you doing, council? I'm taking, working in the C I D division. My supervisor is Sergeant Blank. I just stand here on behalf of the officers of Selma Police Department, not just myself. I want to say I'm nervous, but I just want the council to know that, you know, we the officer of Selma, we, we, we put our life on the line. And I'm just going, just be real with you, we feel sometimes like council really don't care about us, or really not in our corner. But actually, every day, we, we're out trying to solve cases, trying to do what we got to do for the city of Selma. We really, the officers, we, we have a discussion all the time in the alley, we're really not asking for really no more money. You know, we would like to get paid more, but we're not asking for no more money. But equipment, we need equipment, I promise you. Like, all the officers are here right now, they can tell you, we can holla on the money, but with equipment, we need it like ASAP. Like, we go to other departments, I just went and turned R V N to Tuscaloosa Police and Sheriff Department, me and Officer Tyus. I mean, they got so many vehicles, it's just sitting out there, just riding. We ain't asking for brand new vehicles, if, if we can't get brand new vehicles, but we got to get vehicles. I got pictures in my phone, Officer Gaston, he's riding now, trying to take alternate out one vehicle, to put another vehicle, so we can have backup for them. Like, I mean, we, we, I can't stress, we put our life on the line for the city of Selma. I mean, people recruit me to come to property every day, but the love I got for Selma, I stay here, they put my life on the line. I don't care who it is, what calling it is, I, I put my life on the line for Selma, you know. And we just want y'all to hear our cry. I mean, we talked to Ms. Jackson sometime in court, like, we just, we put our life on the line, I, I promise you, for city of Selma. We, we just, we need help. The police department need help.
Councilman Benjamin, Councilman Jackson, and Councilman Johnson, and Councilman Randolph.
Officer McGuire, is that your right title?
Detective McGuire.
Detective, my apologies. Detective McGuire, thank you for speaking.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for serving Selma. I'm sorry that you all feel that way, you know, even when we were in dire straits.
Also, I have submitted a copy of it to the person who submitted that and asked for his tweaking of it as well. I'm not concerned about whether it gets public distribution or not. My major concern is that the people who do the hard work, who carry the burden in the heat of the day, have a sampling of the thinking from other points of view. I don't think we can continue to go the way that we're going. We've got to break through the deadlock and the gridlock of where we are right now. And I think it's going to be important, and I include some of those considerations, I hope, in what I will be giving to each of you as a copy. I think we're teetering and tottering on the brink, on the verge, not just of dysfunction, but perhaps even bankruptcy. And while there are some delays possible for long-term planning, and I address that in what I'm giving to you, there's some things that we've got to do immediately, that we cannot wait for another election cycle to take place. And I know it's tough, and what you do is a thankless job. And whatever you do, somebody's going to pick it apart and find fault with it. But who knows, like Esther, maybe you've come in the positions that you hold for just such a crisis, such a critical moment as this. We trust you. We believe that you are ready for the rise to the occasion. And I just want to submit to each of you some thoughts so that rather than just thinking about one possibility, there will be some other options that will be taken into consideration also. And I thank you for your
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
May I?
Yes, sir.
I have one. Is this a new one?
This is a less rough.
Oh, okay, a rough one, great.
Okay, all right. American Court.
Mr. President, Chief Card, if you could, he wanted to speak or something on behalf of the American Court. And whether we vote up or down, I think he asked last night to, he put it on the floor about the automobiles.
Well, I think it's my finance committee, Monday, it was on the here, doing the finance committee.
Well, you want, I mean, you want to talk to Chief Card today?
Mr. President, I apologize, that was not my understanding. But in saying that, you can see the number of officers that I appear. I would just like to reiterate, and you run a tight ship here, so I'll be very quick with my time. I would not come before this council and ask for additional money. I want to reiterate, we're not doing that. With that, with the exception of Mr. Bernard Randolph's generosity in purchasing a vehicle for the police department, we are in dire, dire straits. Again, and we'll deal with it in finance. I'm simply asking for the opportunity to transfer a portion of the maintenance money. And I count it today, just on our lot, I've got fourteen vehicles that are ready to be surplus. That's before I go to Water Street and count those there. We almost could cover this lease by surplusing these vehicles. With that, I'm going to need the authority to do that. In addition to, to make the lease happen in the finance committee, I will ask for that transfer, that additional money. And with your indulgence, I've got quite a bit of representation here of my officers as opposed to you here, potentially here in my dial tribes. I would like to give the opportunity for Detective Devin McGuire to say a few words. No?
Chief, thank you for coming back. And just so we don't rehash what we already talked about on last night. So what you talked about concerning the vehicles on last night, I asked around, I did a little research. And what I found in my research in just this one day, I'm going to get in trouble having meetings back to back because it doesn't allow you enough time to go and research anything really in one day.
But in my understanding I think that's what council made. I thought I was following the proper protocol.
Oh, no, 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 you did. No, this is not on you. This is, I changed from Thursday to Monday. But what I did find, what I did find was this is that you all have Crown Victorias and all those vehicles that have been there for over two hundred thousand miles and all those things. I'd like to make a motion to approve for the surplus so that he can begin to surplus, sell those cars, sell those cars. And I talked to some very reliable people concerning, not that I'm not saying you're not reliable, but what I'm saying, people I have a relationship with, have built with, you know, long before you came to sell them. So I'd like to make a motion, first of all, concerning that. And then the money that you're asking to be moved, can you please, and it could be a paragraph or whatever, can you please put that in writing to us so that when we meet on Monday, we have a piece of writing from the department head, issue, the department head saying that this is a dire need. We're not asking for new money, we're just asking for money to be moved from one line item to the other line item.
I absolutely do.
Ms. President, I make the motion that the surplus, to give the chief permission to surplus those cars so that he can get the money into the department.
We have a motion on the floor, the council on business, that, council on, any further discussion?
After we have a meeting on Monday, can we have a special call meeting to move forward with this, to transfer? Our citizens are in dire trouble every day when the officer's not out there doing what they need to do because they don't have a transportation neither. So once we have finance committee meeting on Monday, can we have a special call meeting Monday, Baron, they also to move forward on a line, treasure wealth, to move money forward, to go ahead and forward getting with any?
Any further discussion?
Mr. President, and I'll be done all, okay, we have a good relationship, a good working relationship. But I need to, I need to express Detective Devin McGuire has put his life on the line for years here. I am disappointed he has not got an opportunity to speak. He has been gentleman sitting right here, he has been selected by his fellow officers to be a voice.
How you doing, counsel? Working in C I D division, my supervisor is Sergeant Blank. I just stand here on behalf of the officers of Selma Police Department, not just myself. I want to say I'm nervous, but I just want the council to know that, you know, we the officer of Selma, we put our life on the line. And I'm just going, just be real with you, we feel sometimes like council really don't care about us or really not in our corner. But actually, every day we, we're out trying to solve cases, trying to do what we got to do for the city of Selma. We really, the officers, we have a discussion all the time now that we're really not asking for really no more money. You know, we would like to get paid more, but we're not asking for no more money. But the equipment, we need it, I promise you, like, all the officers are here right now, they can tell you. We can holla on the money, but the equipment, we need it like ASAP, like. We go to other departments, I just went and turned R V N to Tuscaloosa Police Sheriff Department. Me and Officer Ty, I mean, they got so many vehicles that just sitting out there, just riding. We ain't asking for brand new vehicles if we can't get brand new vehicles, but we got to get vehicles. I got pictures in my phone, Officer Jackson, he's riding now trying to take alternate out one vehicle to put in another vehicle so we can have backup for them, like, I mean, we, I can't stress, we put our life on the line for the city of Selma. I mean, people recruit me to come to property every day, but the love I got for Selma, I stay here. They put my life on the line. I don't care who it is, what calling is, I put my life on the line for Selma, you know. And we just want y'all to hear our cry. I mean, we talked to Ms. Jackson sometime in court. We just, we put our life on the line, I promise you, for city of Selma, we need help, the police department need help.
Councilman Benjamin, Councilman Johnson, and Councilman
Officer McGuire, is that your right title?
Detective McGuire.
Detective, my apologies, Detective McGuire, thank you for speaking. Thank you for serving Selma. I'm sorry that you all feel that way, you know, even when we were in dire straits, we gave a tremendous raise to the police department. Were you there then? I don't know if it was ten percent or twelve percent, I'm not, I can't even remember.
My actual policy service.
There was a lot going on in the police department at that particular time, and it was, it was in the election season. And a lot went on, a lot went on that year. And so that just does not happen, but we did that. And I understand about the equipment, so about the equipment, because I'm glad you brought that part up because I want to remind the council of what being allocated for you all concerning equipment. When you all made a cry for equipment, there was a deep cry for equipment. So I went to research, me being green on that, I asked officers, am I saying the right language? Does this have the right language? There's an officer here, might have been this one in the back. I asked about his what do you call it?
Vest.
Yeah, vest, you know, was especially made, I wanted to know if it's specially made. I think he told me he bought it himself, I could have wrong officer. But it was an officer here that night concerned, and he said he bought his own vest and all that. And I brought back the list to the council to vote on. It was an extensive list to vote on, and that we allocate that money to those particular items. In there were cameras, there were computers, car computers, there were vests in there. There was, there may have been ammunition in it, there was a lot on that list. Tasers were, yeah, tasers, thank you, because, yeah, I put that vote up for tasers a long time ago when Mr. Shaw was killed over by the chicken house. So there was a long list of items that I had put a motion on the floor for the council to allocate funds to that. And I hope that it's being utilized, or maybe we should start a process if the process has not been started. Right after that, I think citizens did like a relay race or a marathon or something like that. And perhaps that money can now be moved around for something different because I know some of the items that we had allocated money for, citizens purchased themselves. And so maybe that could be moved around to some of, that'll relieve what we allocated and you all can use it in some other manner for equipment. But equipment is, I promise you, it's important, it's important to us. When I was talking to people concerning the vehicles that the chief brought up on last night, and they told me the mileage, they told me the model and all those, I'm like, oh, okay. So I understand that kind of language a little bit, I understand cars, cars just a little bit. Enough to know that they need to be replaced, they do need to be replaced, and two hundred thousand miles is a lot, like. And Crown Victorias, I love them to death, and they're very protective, but at some point you have to get rid of them. I know and understand that. So I thank you for that, I thank you for bringing back up equipment to put it back on our minds that we've already allocated for you all to get some more equipment. We already did that, we already voted on it, for you all to get a whole list of equipment. So I don't know where that is.
Tasers were first.
No, 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 uh-uh, Mr. President, this was some months ago, chief. You may not have been here that night, and you need to get the minutes if you weren't so that you can start the process on this. This was some months ago.
Yes, ma'am, that was to replace tasers, remember, we were in need, tasers are scarred, and I know I'm out of line, Mr. President.
It was a long list, chief, was what I'm saying.
It was for body cameras, which were, were body cameras, body cameras are damaged. So we replaced body cameras.
Computers for the cars.
And we bought eleven computers and we're still seven short.
So you are working on that list?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
So you are working on that list, okay, we, I guess we just need to know what else it is that you need, because you brought up equipment.
Well, when I say equipment when I say equipment, I mean vehicles, like.
Oh, you mean capital equipment?
Yeah, like vehicles, like.
Capital equipment, okay.
Vehicle, I saw it, man, it's still on the yard, people drive it now.
Oh, yeah, I understand it, I understand that, yeah, I thought you were talking about just equipment, my goodness.
Thank you, Councilman Benjamin, Councilman Johnson.
I would just want to say initially that we also had the community to give Cuba oil. We recall they gave a lot of equipment to the police department as well as the fire department. I too want to say that I'm disheartened in saying that you don't feel that we care. I think I try to make it apparent every time I see you all before, I'm gonna shake your hands, give you a hug, tell you just how much I appreciate you, tell you how we're working for you, ask your needs. The last time that we spoke in court, and I asked you about those needs, I actually left court and called ADECA, which I relate to the chief, and was informed that you all had received a B J A grant. And because of that grant, they did not know whether it was overtime or equipment and they would need to know because they could not give additional money to things that you had already written. I found out that that was actually an overtime grant. And so I called them again this morning, I was speaking with the chief last night. And they assured me that Selma is on their radar. They stated to me, I said, well, our chief's paying severe
I spoke to him today as well, they offered seven hundred dollars for cars.
Well, I said it wasn't the information that I received this morning, about seven thirty eight A M when I gave them a call. But what they informed me was that they have Selma on their radar. I said, our chief gave a very impassioned plea last night stating that he needs vehicles. We want to give them to the officers. He stated, and I relate your story from last night, about a murder suspect getting away and waving at you all because you're a vehicle right now, he stated to me, Ms. Jackson, please be patient with us. It will not be October, but we will get you the money that you need for equipment. I said, may I ask one more question? He said, I cannot say exactly what it is until it's released, but know that there are high level people working on you all's behalf. I know that, I said, I know that the U S attorney, he said he's very involved. And what he stated to me was, I said, well, may I ask one more question? Will the funding allow them to buy me vehicles? He said, and equipment, he said, yes, ma'am, both. I said, well, thank you, I appreciate you taking my call this early, and I will relate that information. My concern is that we won't have an opportunity to pay for the hours you work because the pastor here tonight stated exactly what I stated on last evening. We're teetering on the brink of bankruptcy. We're driving down that road so fast that if we were in a vehicle, you would pull us over. We are going so fast that I shared with the council, and I think the chief had already left on last night, that starting in twenty twenty, just one month, we have several months, but I'm talking about one month, that we're going to have to start paying six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars a year. That's fifty-four thousand dollars a month. Currently, we're paying four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars a year. And based on that information alone, I, Mayor Roberts, all of, all of the finances that we're doing and anticipated for the month of March, we only have seven hundred thousand dollars remaining in general fund. That's based on anticipated, that's not what we've already received. So if it's lower, we get lower than what we anticipate, that's going to be lower, lower, lower. No city can operate by having seven hundred thousand dollars in their general fund. I am so nervous. I am so nervous that we're not going to be able to make payroll in the months of June, July, and August, that I'm not willing at this point to make a decision because we haven't looked long term. I know it's forty thousand dollars right now, forty thousand dollars for this year. But this is not a one-year lease, this is a five-year lease that we're looking at. And in five years, we're going to be at two point two million dollars that we're going to be paying for this one month every year. So all I'm asking is that you give us some time, work with us like we want to work with you. I think, I wasn't here when this bond was refinanced, but it was refinanced to get you all, or get the officers at that time, the additional pay. But it put us in a very difficult position because if we had kept this bond where it was, we would have continued to pay two hundred thousand dollars a year until twenty twenty, twenty thirty-nine. However, because we chose to refinance, and actually it was starting down, we would pay two hundred thousand. I think, I see here that we got up to nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars was the highest payment that I see in July of twenty thirty-nine, nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. So it increases over the years, but we would have paid it through twenty thirty-nine. Currently, we'll start making in twenty twenty, we'll start paying six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars for three years. And after that, starting in twenty twenty-three, we'll pay two million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and four cents each year. Until twenty twenty-nine for six years. I'm nervous when we ask to continue to put debt on top of that until we can determine how we're going to pay this and how we can include those vehicles. That's why I'm looking at alternatives. This morning, between seven thirty A M and eight thirty, when I went into, left to go to the courtroom, what I did was I contacted another community agency and asked if they would be willing to donate. They said that they would look at their program and what they have, and also encouraged me to contact others. I'm thinking outside the box, I'm trying because I see what you do. I see how you all handle, by defense attorneys, I see how you have to stand your ground and present your evidence when they come back and say, isn't it true that you did, isn't it really that you did this? And I see your professionalism, and I see the way that you protect our city, and all of us as citizens. So my heart is with you to give as much equipment as possible. I told the chief on last evening, it is my desire to work with him to get this fleet plan done. I want to make sure that it's in his budget, that he doesn't have to come in March, and that I don't have to be nervous about approving it because we've already found the money in the budget. But I'm asking that you please work with us. It's not because that the council does not want you to have new vehicles, does not trust you to have new vehicles, does not believe in you, but it's the fact that I want, at the end of the day, for you to get the paycheck that you so rightfully earned. And at this point, I don't see how we're going to be able to do that.
Counselor, if I can add, I mean, I own Detective McGuire, his point to focus on putting murderers in jail, he just wanted to speak for the officers as far as paying back bond debt that was done by previous administration. I want him to focus on putting murders in jail. I want to reiterate, I'm not asking for more money, I'm just asking to move some money. Thank you for your motion. I was informed, though, that I'll need to bring back these vehicles back before the council with a list, and I will go to work on that, and we'll be back Monday in proper order as you ask for, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, the chief said something that I just wanted to thank you. So, chief, I know, and that's what I want to focus on, and I want to focus on, as part of the council, focus on finances to make sure that you have them there. I was letting him know where our heart is, so he won't believe in his heart that we don't care about him. But focus on everything, not only the murderers that you've been bringing in, but all of the breakies and everything else, and all of the unlawful possession, possession of substance abuse and all those things, possession of controlled substances that you bring in. So do that, and let us focus on money, and I promise, I make a pledge to you, that we're going to do everything necessary to ensure that you have just what you need. If that's going out, I'm standing on the street asking for more money for our officers, if that's calling more agencies, if that's getting with the U S attorney, whatever means necessary, we're going to ensure that you have what you need, but just please work with us.
And what I'll bring to you, Ms. Jackson, is we'll go see Mayor Boswell to gather it at ADECA, and we'll figure out what the difference is. Fair enough?
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, first of all, to the group, McGuire, McGuire, I'm sorry, look, my heart is out for you all. I think you know that from day one to my brothers, was Officer City of Selma, and he worked for the Sheriff's Department for the county. Every day that y'all got there, you're risking your life, I see Officer Haye somewhere here, I mean, the car that he was in shouldn't have been in that car, an old Radler Ford Crown Victoria. And when I saw it, I came out that morning, I'm like, what are you doing in that vehicle? But he had no other choice. We sit up and talking about funding, this is something we've been talking about one or two years. Now we see that the city don't have the money, we up and talking about one minute, city got money, city got money. Now I thank the, thank Ms. Jackson, I don't realize that we're in a hole, we need money. So what we have to do now is come back to the table by finding some money and come back to you. We don't talk about this. For the whole time, we had whole city of Selma thinking that we got money. Still that kind of money, we need some more revenues in here, we still operate on a budget back in the smilling days. We need funding, business is gone, I appreciate this, I appreciate this. Right now, I'm thanking you, Ms. Jackson, that you got out to and go down there and see where we at. We in trouble, we need funding. And right now, y'all didn't ask for no money, y'all asked for the money that we wasted off paying Reloa, paying B I S O N, and paying all these other places, that's all y'all asked for, just to transfer some funding that we paying these Radler cars on putting on some other cars. Because it's sad that we lose an officer every day going to other places because we can't protect you all. It's sad, it been sad. Two things we need to concentrate in the city of Selma, public work and public safety. Without them, we ain't got yourself nothing. We waste a whole two years thinking hard about what we got money on. First thing she said when she came in, said we was in trouble. Uh, John, or Councilor Shaw said, thank you, even in any way, he told us a few times, we need more funding. So thank you for saying what you're saying, that pass for even, uh, revenue, we may go bankrupt. We need to find revenue soon, real soon. So we don't, we just gonna have some trouble. And like I said again, I pray the Lord that they continue to understand that we need you all. I seen a young man, as God my witness, getting his car, out of his car, wanting his out with a long A K A, eye right on his side. I was shocked when I saw that, that's the first time I ever seen a citizen with a gun bigger than that. I'm like, oh my God. But I guess that's law, he can have that. But it's sad that if he ever get the hope, y'all get behind y'all in a car that'll cut the eye on you all, and this man start loading up upon y'all with that type of gun, y'all in trouble. So I pray to God, y'all ain't gonna just be in here, y'all have a reason for protecting, I mean, y'all need them, man. And I'm with you a hundred percent. So I hope we do put the, have a special call meeting next week after we do the finance committee meeting on Monday, and we gonna vote up or down, and that way you determine who care about you all, like they say, or who don't care about y'all.
Counselor Randolph?
Yes, uh, Detective McGuire, first of all, I want to say thank you for your service. Thank you for your service in the military, I didn't know you was in the military. But I support some calls to the officer, you know, I support the officer one hundred percent, you know. I think, you know, cars are needed because I live in Old Fifth Avenue, and I'm just like, I don't know, I guess I'm addicted to my scanner, I sit at home and listen at the scanner. And I get upset when I hear somebody got away from y'all because of a car they I'll tell you how I get mad is, what the word I want to use, I can't, I gotta be correct on my language. But I promise y'all this, you know, I would like to see the road because we don't have a trail. You know, I don't, they can say we hurting for money, I don't pay that no attention because if they want money, they gonna find what they need, get somewhere, they gonna find the money. But like I said, y'all need vehicles, and you need vehicles. And, chief, when I was in California, I was in Oakland area, and if someone says in the suburb, they got corporations to buy cars, and they put their corporation logos on the cars.
Like NASCAR, I'm sorry.
Yeah. And you start the NASCAR, you know, so maybe when we get yes, they got side of Boston and chain, you know, all those rich folk came here for Jubilee, some of them, they go, they go for, you know, they can give a hundred thousand dollars, just like they got our camera for a hundred and sixty-one thousand, I don't know what you talking about, we need.
About forty thousand a year.
For how many years?
Five years, and that'd be six new vehicles.
Yeah, so
Maintenance included.
Yeah, and so when we get, when we do get these new vehicles, I know we gonna get some vehicles for y'all, but let's come up with a maintenance plan on these vehicles, we need an in-house maintenance person, y'all. And they got an in-house maintenance person, guess what? When you go to, to these mechanics right here, guess what? They gonna fix it, they gonna fix enough for you to bring it back to them. I'm just telling you, because I want to make money too, if I'm a mechanic, I'm like, you know, I'm just being for real with you. Yeah, because, it just don't make no sense, fix a car, get it break down, you know. But like I said, I appreciate every officer that we have. That, like I said, when they was changing that guy, and that, and the car cut off, I started getting it unfinished. I was laying down, but I ain't want to get no speeding ticket, I ain't no officer, for what I'm saying.
Hey, master.
Huh? Yeah, but like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm in, you know, we appreciate y'all. And I'm telling you, I'm, I'm, from the heart, I appreciate every officer we chat. I'm, you know, it's the truth. None of it the truth. I, you know, I just want, was ready for our officer. Just like I'm in the military, did it like you. And I was the best equipment that we could get in the military, you know. Some people saying they see Trump, uh, adding money for the, for, uh, for the military. I don't disagree with him. I know what kind of Radler money we got. I know. And that's the same way with y'all. So, you know, we gonna, we gonna move on, but I hope we can find ways to get these cars together.
Thank you, Councilman Reddall. And Councilman Johnson, we will move on.
Chief, I was talking to, just got phone with Rex Jones, who was obviously orchestrating the cemetery run. So many great businesses and individuals in the community gave from their heart, that's a good.
And I think Rex's parents are here, are there, here, there.
They are. But one of the things that happened late in that endeavor, we were able to secure ten thousand dollars, additional monies for the police department. So I was strongly urged, I talked with Rex a minute ago, please give him a call, find out what we could do to use that money to help.
Rex is short blocking me.
Yes, he is. But again, it's money that we haven't done anything with. We're waiting to kind of follow up with you about additional needs and obviously this seems pretty paramount. So please get with him and just kind of see what we can work out there and see if we can't get that money in your hands and at least make that difference. I know it's not the answer to the problem.
Sure.
But what I think is wonderful about it is that it shows that the heart of the citizens is still behind the police department.
Oh, absolutely.
And it shows they're willing to do what they can. And I said that at this council meeting before the cemetery run came up. I said, ask the citizens and see what the citizens would do to help us meet those needs. And they rose to the occasion and we were able to raise a pretty good bit of money. So I'm happy that that, that trust gave us that ten thousand dollars to use for the police department. And please give it to Rex as soon as you can to find out how that could be used to help facilitate new vehicles or helping assist with equipment.
I totally agree with that. And I joked a little bit about what Councilman Reddall said. But he said, it's actually, there's agencies doing that. And one option may be looking at a five oh one C three that could help divert money raised towards capital projects.
And that's what Black Gold Benefit Group was able to do in this situation.
But I also have to say, that's a probably more of a long-term fix. We're just in a.
Ten grand sitting there if you want to get.
I'll put in money for it. I've got a way.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you to all officers in the area.
I just want to, I want to say to the officers, I know y'all need cars because I'm out there in the community and I see you. And also I know that when you had the car, some of the cars was up running. We did get more patrolling out there lately since the vehicles. We, we bear recital and see a officer, a car going through our community. And I hear you, I hear y'all a lot of time talk about it. And I see sometimes, I see you with your hood up, you know, you get run hot. But, you know, I think the best understanding what you're doing now, when you come before the council and talk to us about what you guys really need. And we do need you out in our community, patrolling during the daytime and at night when things are going on. So don't never feel like we don't care about you because we do.
Mr. President, thank you. Council, thank you. And I'll put that surplus in there together and get it to the council. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Council, um. Councilman Johnson, I want to speak to you without the officer being present because I'm really disappointed in what you had to say this evening. There was, this was not a time to get a personal deed. I, I haven't, I haven't finally realized, if you recall, I'm one of the ones that have said, I don't know. There are some that have stated there's money. There's some that have stated there's no money. I'm one of the ones that said, let me see the documentation.
Compliment, you didn't look at the document, and you need it.
And if you allow me to finish. And finally, what happened was our mayor of the city itself allowed me to speak with the finance department. I haven't gotten all the information that I would like to have, but the information that I have received lets me know that we just can't make decisions off our feelings in the moment. I believe that's what happened with the refinancing of the fund. I wasn't here, can't say that. But as the council protein stated, that it was a very difficult decision. It was in a political season and it was something that they rarely do. Refinancing that fund has put us in a very, very difficult position. I got an opportunity to look at the amortization table. That's something that hadn't been provided to us previously. I have never received this amortization table and having an opportunity to look at it. That's why I'm making those decisions. And that's why I believe that we need to curb our spending and determine how we're going to look at things long term. What we're saying is, we have, we want forty thousand dollars. We just want forty thousand dollars. But we're not saying this forty thousand is over five years. So it's going to actually total, based on the paperwork he was, gave us last night, a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And then we got a kind of excavator or some type of equipment. That's seven hundred thousand dollars and it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And we keep adding debt on top of debt on top of debt. We're not going to be able to handle the full scale of what's required of us without either raising taxes or filing for bankruptcy. And it's neither that we want to do, what we need to do at this time is determine where we can cut. And that's where we haven't really found out. Because if Adeta and other agency, community agencies are saying that we want to give money, allow them. I mean, if they raise thirty, almost forty thousand dollars this year, why can't we get with the community to say, hey, for the fleet plan, can we, can you work with us for the next five years to raise that amount? And that's, that's a debt, a hundred and seventy-three thousand that's not on them. Let's, I guess all I'm saying, let's explore the options. Because in five years, when we get this two point two million dollars, I mean, we're gonna make it. We're not gonna have a eleven cent tax. We're gonna have a fifteen cent tax because we're gonna have so many more expenses. And that's all I want to say.
I agree with that, Mr. President, because true enough, we got to make a move one way or the other. The city can't continue on operating like this. We'll down all, pretty much all the cuts we can. Like I said before, I came up with the, uh, mental motion of the goal, uh, once then, which is past ten. Okay, but then the mayor came back and said, no, let's see what we do on cuts, I said to the fore. He stopped it and we did, see whatever cuts we did. He cut, cut, cut. Even got to the point where he had to cut employees. We, our employees, we lost like seven or so workers. We still cut. Everybody that got new jobs or got terminated, well, we never feel the positions any. So right now, we stay to cutting. Now, right now, if we cut some over, what, what we gonna do yet? We can't keep on cutting, cutting, cutting. The city ain't gonna have nothing to operate on. We only have grass, keep the cut grass. The grass ain't ready to grow. We need people to maintain, people to do, uh, for public work. Uh, right now, we have issues, uh, out to the recreation department, on the restroom. Councilman Jackson, me and you have to pay for a pot of pot. For the Morgan or Melville, uh, tennis team to have the tournament out to the stadium. Because we ain't have no workers that can clean the restrooms up. And it's a lot of things that we did, that it's sad that the schools had to come to the stadium to clean the stadium up in order to play games out there. We got to find somewhere, uh, revenues. Now, grants is great, but meanwhile, for the public safety, we stayed away on grants and grants and stuff. And our office had a recently life every day. You know, so I get a report in, like you all, and I'm, 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 I'm looking at it. My only duty is to treasure and tactic, whatever you want to call it, the water work. So I'm familiar with what's going on. I'm looking at it like everybody else. I see we in trouble. I see we in trouble. I read the reports like everybody else. I know this. I was there when the police did the twelve percent, ten percent, uh, that blue state that we had. You know, so I understand you knew, you didn't know this. I knew what's going on. So, but we need more revenues. One way or another, we got to figure it out. You know, but it's sad that our city's steady crumbling going down. And meanwhile, while we sit up and trying to figure out, uh, some more cuts. But I'm, I'm gonna be through with that. But anyway, we can just keep, because I'm just on one vote. And all I can say, I'm doing the best we can for what we can, not just for water, but for the city itself.
Now, just you say that the vote in the special call meeting would determine who cares about the officers and who doesn't. That's not.
They not ask for new money, though. They not ask for new money. They ask for money we spending every day repairing the Radler cars that we got out there. So we spending that money in. They spending money right now every day, but then, this bothers me. We get to the mics when the officer's in here, we say one thing, but now it would be mobbing and other things now. So we'll see Tuesday what's gonna happen Tuesday. Uh, we just, whatever you have, special call meeting. Just vote up now.
Okay, now to the committed reports. Recreation Committee, Councilman Johnson, you have a committed report?
No, no.
I have a question. Since we're on recreation, I have a question. Can you please find out what's going on and find out why coaches and students do have to clean up?
I do.
I don't know, because there's an off-season where workers out there are, they're not doing anything. So why can't you pressure wash and why can't you clean the bathroom? The bathroom should not be in that condition, Councilman Johnson. When, I don't care if it's one worker out there, you know, hotel people clean a whole floor by themselves. And it'll have an off-season. If, when we have football season, that's only one sport going on, that's football that I know of. Now you getting in the uptick of, um, baseball and whatever goes on in the springtime. I think more stuff goes on. Yeah, track. How could I forget track? My son is on the track team. Uh, and track. In fact, they are the ones who cleaned up. And so why are bathrooms in that condition? Why is the concession stand in that condition where my son and his coach and his classmates have to come and clean up for everybody who's about to use the track? When you have downtime, you clean.
Well, can I ask that, your honor?
Yeah, I'm asking you.
You got, I'm gonna check out, but what I went and looked into myself, you got two in a part-time. You got Mr. Van Davel there on the track, you got Jared Barr and Terry Jackson on the.
I can't address Mr. Van Davel because he's.
I, I see, I know, I know, but I see him out there. So that make three, I see out there doing the tech. When you ride in these cell, out there on Plant Street at the old diamond out there, you can't even tell whether it's a baseball diamond because grass has moved over. You go to all these other parks, you see the same thing. The grass grew normally when all the workers there, all the fields were maintained. I have two fields in my ward, the Big League and Little League. You can't tell they baseball field now. The grass has grew all over the diamond period and all. So I'm pretty sure the same thing out to the field. Terry Jackson called me every day, crying, man, we need some help. We can't do about it. So they have to try and get the field. When the field is, uh, is, uh, game played, he out there all night till the game's over. Then the next morning, they got to come back out there, the two of them, Jared Barr and him, and try and redo another field. Now, okay, now they doing this field for the tournament, but then the tennis tournament coming along, which they didn't have no knowledge of the tennis tournament because the coach did not call us and they have a tennis tournament down there and the restroom was, uh, wasn't, uh, peacefully used. So, uh, I called Terry and asked Terry, can y'all clean, and he said, Mike, you know, when we can do it. That's when Councilman Jackson and myself started, we go head on and put a pot of pot out there. Because it was impossible for them to do it all at that time. You're talking about two, and I asked now. So, uh, that's, I think the mayor mentioned, uh, then out to them that we may have to close it down because it's impossible for them to do it. I asked, I said, well, can we hire part-time workers or some workers to do, help out in recreation? Because then there's some funds we can get in. And some reason, all the work, what I understood is that we've been in catch hell making payments, uh, making payroll now. It's just that bad.
So what I'm asking you to ask them is this right here. During the downtime, when you're just sitting, go out there. Don't you go out there. Go out there during the downtime when nobody's doing anything and everybody's chilling. During the downtime, why, 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 why? When you knew the track season was coming, did you let this, the bathroom sit like that? Did you let the concession stand sit like that? And I'm asking you to ask them, because I know you won't know. Ask them during the downtime, why was this not? Yes, you're gonna be out there till midnight. It's like when my son does do his homework. He's gonna be up to midnight doing his homework because during his downtime, he was playing the new game, whatever the name of it, Fortnite. And so, yes, he's gonna be up to midnight because he failed during his downtime to do what he was supposed to be doing in the downtime. So all I'm asking is about downtime, how come it wasn't done? And, and these coaches out here, we're gonna be requiring them to pay us the full price. Might need to make a motion so they can get a refund. They clean and bought cleaning material. They're paying full price for, uh, what we, we are supposed to be doing. Ask them that for me, please.
I'll make sure. And now, I was trying to come to that work session.
Yeah, yeah, work session, work session.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Uh, Ms. Councilman Johnson, me, uh, at, at the time with those, those toilets, we had one decent toilet out there by the tennis court. And this gentleman had always kept it so that when guests come, that they can use it. But you have, for the last, we've been in office two years and we have had people in position out there running the recreation department. You have two other bathrooms. You know, it's, it's a shame that for two years, the recreation department have two, it would be three restrooms by the tennis court, two of them are destroyed. And for two years, uh, we have, they have money that they've been using for, uh, doing repair. And I want to know what happened to that money, uh, that they've been calling repairing out there. And those bathrooms been out of whack for. If you see those restroom, it's a shame that the city itself have guests. Those two, two restrooms been out ordered that long. And it's a shame that we have to have guests playing tennis. That one restroom, the one that y'all had to clean up, they messed around and left it open. And that's how it got so messed up. But someone needs to be answered. In two years, what happened?
Well, I, I, I would look into that. What I'm just now giving to me, the, uh, uh, recreation chair. I would look into that, but also miss that as well. It's really sad that when you got opportunity to use a public restroom, you just use it. You don't care where you use it at. It's sad that anytime you go in there, you just do what you want to do instead of doing it the proper way like you do in your house. It's really sad we got a lot of the restroom. You know, I mean, it just filthy. Uh, them restroom can't be cleaned up. Stuff ain't nothing to be taken out and replaced. So we're gonna have to look into replacing.
That's why I asked you.
All the.
Two years, they should have never been like this.
Well, again, I'm looking to that.
They wouldn't do anything when they, when they were sitting like that the first time. Couldn't get anybody to do anything down there now. So good luck getting that fixed.
Right.
I mean, because you got guys that sit there and drive, I sat there and watched a guy drive by it a hundred times. He never got out of the car to do anything. So, I mean, you know, I've got videotape of it. I got stills of it. You know, that, that's a mess, however. And it's, it's part management and it's part money. So it's all one thing. It's a combination of both.
There, to the.
I wonder who was in leadership that got us in this mess we in. I don't even know that we in a mess. But, uh, Councilman.
I have no report.
My, my question to you is, uh, it's getting ready for baseball season and I was told that, uh, that, uh, a non-city employees out there taking our money for kids to play baseball. And I, and I think, uh, that's kind of like, I'm, I'm not saying nobody taking on money so long. But how can a non-city employee take a money for the city? You know, that, that could be, uh.
Is it just the money that's a fight?
You know, it's just a fair registration for baseball. And, and, and then you got, uh, recreation employees that are laying off, it just happens.
So they wouldn't volunteer?
I don't know if it's a volunteer that, uh, whatever, but he, he's not a city employee.
Takes a farm to, to play baseball.
I, I think, uh, I think, uh, we need to, you know, address that.
I'll, I'll bring that order back to you.
Thank you. I'm going to strike a committee.
I have no report. Didn't we just have a semi-pro football game out there at night during Jubilee weekend?
Yeah, you did.
Okay. Just want to make sure. We got, we got no money, but we got money for that.
You didn't have any.
Kids, semi-pro ball. Uh, yeah, kids. I don't know. I don't know. Just thought.
All right. I'm going to the building. Councilwoman Yavla, gone. She's not here. Public workers, Councilman Scholl, Sheriff of the Family, Councilwoman Jackson. Finance committee, we will be having a meeting. Finance committee will be Monday at five o'clock here. Take our sign-up and notice all of it to the manager. Public buildings committee, Councilwoman.
I was supposed to have a public building, it's only twenty, twenty-third. Also, President Boyd, can you, uh, please, uh, get this information for me from the insurance company that we had asked for before? We need that at our meeting about the, you know, claims. We haven't got it yet. And also, we have, uh,
And also, we have, uh, what about the, uh, we have, uh, another, uh, I need to talk to you about. Not right now.
All right.
But I will, uh, I would, I would like to try to help, uh, Mr. Johnson.
Let me know when I'm here.
Yeah, we, because we gonna, wanna talk about it soon. And also, can you ask, since you may, I had requests before, that I would like to go to all of the, the public buildings. Uh, I want to check out, I want to go to some of them, and I've been waiting, and we're into our second month, and I haven't made a move yet. I've just been looking on the outside, I wanna go inside, could you please ask them, Ms. Davis, if it'll find time?
Okay, I'll write it down, uh, thank you. Capital Quitting, Councilman Randolph, it's fifty minutes, that's all.
No report, Mr. President.
Guess those are in law, Councilman, do we got anything?
I just want to say goodnight to everybody, thanks for, uh, thank you for everything that the citizens do, uh, don't forget to clean up. Uh, Citywide Cleaners, we're gonna have this council session, and just hope and pray everybody just, just clean up around, clean out some of their homes. Uh, we'll try to get the other stuff done, and I want to thank everybody, um, I'll say goodnight.
All right, thank you, Councilman, um, Johnson. Councilman Randolph.
Yes, um, I had, uh, just, uh, got a text from a lady that walked in, and, uh, and she wanted to make sure everybody know where your dumpster was gonna be and, uh, uh, trash bags. Do you have any extra trash bag that you could get?
No, I, I did, we clean up Saturday, it took a lot myself, I'm, I'm going to...
All right, so, so that's your question, that they wanna know about, uh, trash bags as well?
But I, I won't have like what she's trying to do, I used a lot of them.
Yeah, that's what, that's what, that's what, that's what.
I think Councilman Johnson, you did mention you would purchase some...
Yeah, I got some, I might have, uh, I may have some extra come see, but I have two hundred bags myself, so. Then I might have some props, extra gloves.
You got some extra sticks that you bought? Are you not...
Are you gonna be responding for my stick, because I just got a new box? I don't get three or four sticks, they do not give me my sticks back.
I'm gonna purchase some, so I'm, you, uh, when we get you some, I'll purchase some of you too.
Okay, some sticks?
I'm not trying to go, uh, to mom and, uh, to, uh, see how many, how many they run of these, if you don't know that.
Uh, you can get them from here, it'd be six in the box, and it was right across from us.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, he have six in the box.
Good, good, okay, well, yeah, you make it, I'm gonna purchase some.
All right, anything else, Councilman?
I just wanna thank everybody for nice meeting, you know, and, uh, and, uh, I don't believe the city broke. I don't believe it, because we don't have a treasury that tells us that, after, until we get our treasury to actually tell us, and we get the books, you know, then, then you just say we broke, uh, to that, to the way you come back, we not know for a sudden.
And, and another thing too, like, the people have feeling that they need to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you borrow some vest, they need vests on.
All right, all right, Councilwoman Thomas.
Uh, just brief, I think one of the things that, uh, Councilman Johnson said, and, I mean, we all know it, it's accountability. The citizens aren't accountable to each other, they're not accountable to their families, they're not accountable to their God, they're not accountable to us. We're not accountable to you, the mayor's not accountable to us, it's all accountability. I mean, until we can be accountable to one another, we're never gonna fix this up. And we gotta change the paradigm on how we think, or the, the way we think in the city itself. We can be a thriving town or a dying city, it's a, it's a mentality thing. We have to change the way we think about our community, because the, the taxpayers are, are taxed up to the hill, the businesses are trying to survive. So we talk about new revenue, we need to talk about accountability first. Uh, accountability when it comes to our neighborhoods, accountability when it comes to crime, accountability across the board. You know, crime didn't just start all over itself at one time, it started in one house, on one day, on one block, and one war. Just like the problems financially with the city, it started one day, one decision, that led to another decision, and so on and so forth. So until we all, as citizens, can look each other in the face and say, hey, I'm accountable to you, we gotta figure out some other way to make it happen, because that's the thing that's gonna change our, our town, is accountability and respect for one another. And, you know, you can be accountable to the ghost of the grandmother, to the Lord, whoever wanna be accountable, just find someone, for goodness sakes, to be accountable too, so we get this thing standing up the right way and get moving in the right direction again, because until that happens, we're not going anywhere. Period.
Thank you, Councilman Mulley. Also, I would like to remind everybody about the award, I can sell my period bench that starts on Friday, uh, March the fifteenth. Want to encourage you to please come out here today. Councilwoman Benjamin.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I have felt like I have been in a professional lecture tonight, like, back in classroom, listening to my professor, and everybody got something to say that they said the night before. I felt like we re-did half of the work session at the beginning of the meeting. So those of you who missed the work session, I guess it benefited you to, for us to go back over it again, we gotta stop that. I'm gonna say whatever else I have to say for the next meeting, because I, I just felt like something else was going on here. So let me just remind everybody that Ward Four, we start earlier than twelve noon, um, I have to get with the, the, the leader that's been assigned to my ward, uh, the citizens who are putting this together also assigned as the leader. And I, I wanna follow suit with them, because, uh, they're putting this together, anytime a citizen puts something together involving picking up a piece of trash, I am with it. But I just wanna start earlier than twelve noon, I, I would love to start at eight o'clock actually. And so, uh, uh, look for that on my Facebook page, and I'll announce it on the radio on tomorrow, but let me get with my leader that's been assigned to me.
You still have radio show at Ward?
Oh, no, no. Yes, so don't y'all get jittery, I'm, I'm gonna be having a radio show, be at ease. I will call radio, though, if that, that leader says that we can change from twelve to eight o'clock. And I do wanna follow suit with whatever they have put together for us, because I didn't put this together the other day. So just look out on my Facebook page and the radio, I will call me in if that time can change from twelve. I just readily would do it early.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Jackson, closing the line.
God bless you and good night.
Councilwoman Thomas.
I just wanna say, um, don't forget the ward meeting tomorrow at five, and good night.